This is our workshop. On, I guess, training session for this, so if our city clerk can call the roll.
Yes ma'am. Mayor Llewellyn?
Here.
Vice Mayor Oddman?
I know she's here, I saw her as I was coming in.
Yes, I see her as a panelist.
Yes. Okay, go ahead to the next.
Is she unmuted?
Yes.
Alright, Commissioner Brandimart will not be present. Commissioner Harris?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner James will not be present. City Manager Garcia?
What am I supposed to be doing here?
I'm taking role.
Say here.
City Manager Garcia? Okay, Assistant City Attorney Bootsis.
Close, it's Bootsis.
Bootsis.
There you go. I'm here.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Oddman?
She shouldn't be here. See, this is why we practice.
That's, that's the point of this.
Anna!
I don't hear anything!
Yeah, Lori just texted me, "Where are you?"
I'm here, what am I supposed to be doing?
Because they're taking your role right now.
Well...
Hell, don't come up here! Because they told me I didn't have to do anything.
Me too!
We can hear you.
Okay, we're all here.
Anyone can hear us.
I'm sending, I'm sending Monica upstairs.
Okay.
Am I supposed to click where it says City Manager?
No.
I can't hear anything.
I, I see the, I see the Vice Mayor-
I just, because I pressed start video, but I have no idea-
I don't hear anything. I, I hear, I hear the Vice Mayor from the other room.
But I can't hear them. Like, I hear, I see that the mayor is talking, I don't hear you, mayor.
You can't hear me?
I don't hear the mayor. I hear Lauren, that's only because she's on the other room. Can anybody see me?
No. I can see the Vice Mayor, I can see, and I can see-
So I see the Vice Mayor, and I see the mayor, but that's it?
And I see a place for our city clerk.
You see me? I don't see-
So Lori, I can see your face, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay. I, I can just tell what you're saying, because I read your lips. Okay, so she can-
I, I see the manager.
For us.
Hello.
I can't hear her.
Should I turn on the light?
Hey Bill!
Hello. Oh, there we go.
Commissioner Harris.
Oh, I see Commissioner Harris. He's wearing a mask. He's wearing a mask. Okay, so...
They hear you.
I can't hear them. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
No, see the Vice Mayor, okay.
Yes, I can hear you.
Hi!
And now we're all, now, now they're frozen.
Thank God I came in. I think-
Commissioner Harris, you are too much.
I've been here too. Because it's gonna be very complicated.
Commissioner Harris is in congedo today.
I can't hear Bill, but I can tell he's having a big old time over there.
Alright.
Corinne, are you on yet? Can we hear you? Raquel, do you have your hand raised again?
Yes, I, I don't know if you all see me. I see all of you.
I see your name.
I just want to put it out there for everybody, so you're aware. If you're a panelist, you can have, you can be on video. If you're an attendee, you cannot be on video. So for currently Corinne, Raquel, Eleanor, Adam Siegel, Fernando, Kathleen, Linda, you guys are attendees, so there is no, you cannot be on-
City Manager.
But you can see, you should be able to see the presentation and, and the video from the panelists.
Okay.
Oh, I thought I was gonna be able to practice as a panelist, because that's, that's what I'll be at the CRA meeting, correct?
Oh, I can hear you all now!
Hey!
Wait, let me see if Anna sticks. I'm gonna try and fix her. Anna!
Okay, um, hang on Raquel. Mayor, can you, can you go to the city manager and promote her to panelist, please?
Yes. I could do the same with Raquel.
I'd do the same with Raquel, yeah. And then you may want to mute Corinne, because her mic is still open.
Yeah, because I have her with her hand up still. I haven't heard her respond yet.
Um, let me see.
Eleanor, hold on.
No.
Eleanor, yes?
Okay, am I supposed to remute myself? Can you hear me now, mayor?
We're gonna take the role again in a minute, just hold on a second. Eleanor, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I was just trying to let you know Corinne is on. She can't be heard, though. She's been trying to speak, so I don't know if she's muted, or maybe she needs to unmute herself on the screen. I'll try to work with her on that.
So Anna and I just had the same problem, and we fixed it. On the keyboard, on, it's F6. And if you press F6, it will, it'll, it'll make it all better. At least it did for Anna and I. So try that.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Right. So, let's try now Corinne, can you hear us? Are you there?
She said she-
Hold on, I got Eleanor, Eleanor?
She can hear everything, but she can't talk.
That's weird.
I had to touch the screen. I have a touchscreen computer, though, and then there's a mute button that comes up. Instead of raise your hand, on the left-hand side, it says mute or unmute. Maybe she muted herself.
Yeah, because she's on mine. I just want to make sure we can hear everybody, and everybody can hear us.
She's still, she showed me a screenshot, she's not muted, but she still can't speak. So I'm thinking, maybe-
Maybe the laptop on her computer has a problem? Alright?
Is she unmuted on your end, Frank?
Um, she is unmuted. I, I mean, I see her as an attendee, and, and the mute is not on, so I think that maybe there's just a technical thing on her side we need to work out.
Okay, well, we can have a separate training with her, and then we'll just, um, she can hear everything anyway, so...
Okay.
And Raquel, we can see you on video too.
And now we can see, yes. Alright, so do you want to, do we want to try this roll call again from the beginning, since everybody can hear and, and participate now?
Sure. Mayor, Mayor Llewellyn, sorry.
Here.
Vice Mayor Oddman?
Here!
Commissioner Brandimart is not attending. Commissioner Harris?
Here.
Commissioner James will not be attending. City Manager Garcia?
She said here, did you hear her?
I did not hear her.
I did hear.
She said here.
Wait, I just unmuted her.
City Manager Garcia?
Here.
Thank you. City, Assistant City Attorney Bootsis.
Very good, I'm here!
Thank you.
Okay. Um, okay. That would be our normal panel for the workshop. We also have a couple of additional panelists, including our Executive Director of the CRA, Raquel Williams, who is here, as well as our Director of Finance, Frank MaPaolo. Um, any, any else? And we have IT also. Um, alright, so... Questions about what we're doing, and how this works, or Frank, do you just want to go ahead and kind of explain how the process is gonna work here? What we're doing?
Yeah, um, let's turn on my video, I guess. Okay, so, hey, everybody. We, um, I think so far we're doing okay, and, um, thank you all for your cooperation and patience. We will work with those who are having technical issues, and make sure that you guys are able to, um, to be seen and heard when necessary. So, um, if you, if you have the app and you're already in, in the webinar, then this is pretty much the extent of, of what you need to do. And, um, going forward, um, we're gonna have the way that I envisioned it, and I think it works pretty well, is anybody who's on the dais normally is gonna be on as a panelist throughout the meeting. When someone is invited up to speak, give a presentation, or when they're normally called up to the podium during a question being, they will be brought in as a panelist, and then have the opportunity to be seen and heard. Uh, or they, it's up to the mayor, you can, if, if you don't want to bring them up on video, they can be allowed to speak, just like we've already done with the attendees. Anybody who's gonna be presenting PowerPoint or any other documentation must be a panelist. You don't have the ability to present unless you're a panelist. So that's something important to consider. So if you're gonna be presenting something, you have to be using the app, you can't be calling in on telephone. And, um, one other thing is when you join the meeting, it's good practice to, if, if you're not logged in already through the system, because you, you know, people who have a city extension, the phone system will automatically, uh, you can log in and have your name and everything in the system, but if you're joining the meeting and it asks you for your name, it's best practice to put in your title and your name. That way, that's what we see in the, in the participant list. So, um, other than that, I mean, we're, we're gonna continue to work through on the technical side of things, as far, you know, working with the mayor, and making sure that the controls are, are understood, and, and we can manage the meeting. The way we have it set up now, if, if you're an attendee, you have virtually no control at all. You can't present materially, you can't speak unless you've been even permitted to speak, and then you have to be unmuted. So, uh, that minimizes the, the risk of, of a rogue character coming in and trying to somehow, you know, zoom bomb the meeting, as what we've been seeing and hearing going on. Um, so that's why, that's why we chose this webinar format, is to prevent somebody from presenting something who's not a panelist. And there's no access to be a panelist, provided by default, so you have to come in as an attendee and then be promoted to panelist. So, um, so that minimizes the risk of someone taking control of the meeting, that we don't want to, to be able to do something like that. And, um, otherwise, I think we have it pretty well worked out, we have the technology set up right, and, um, and I'm, you know, we're here, me and Monica, to help anybody with anything they need before next meeting on the 28th.
Um, can, can we, um, do like a quick test of the attendees, to see if everybody, were they able to hear us and able to speak, so that we can hear them?
Yes, as, as the host, you have the ability. I don't have any ability to actually do that right.
Okay. I'd like to do, like, kind of like go through and just make sure each one can. I, we know Corinne is having an issue, so we'll, we'll have you address that at a later time. Eleanor, we already did hear from, I, I see Lauren, hold on. Hold on. Um... Vice Mayor?
So my question was, so exactly what I was doing now, how, I, uh, Monica showed me when I, when she first logged me in, but I don't see it. How do I, the equivalent of, you know, so, how do you have the button thing, and you know who to call on? How do we raise our hand, or whatever we're calling it? How do I alert you I want to speak?
Yeah, for the panelists, I'm not sure, because I don't see a spot.
Yes, for the, for the panelists, because I'm a panelist right now, I have a button in my participants panel. And if I click on panelists, and there's 10 panelists, at the bottom of that window, it says raise hand.
Okay, I just did it. So Lori, do you see anything differently, because I, I just raised my hand?
I do. I see your hand raised, and I see somebody else's hand raised. Hold on, I'm getting to it.
Frank.
Yes, I see Frank, as well.
So is that screen always open for you, Lori? Can you always see?
I'll, I'll tell you exactly what I'm seeing. I have a list of panelists that I'm on right now. I can see that there are attendees as well, there are seven attendees. And when somebody raises their hand, it, a little hand pops up right next to yours, it's like, like right, right now. So yours was, there's a, there's a one hand raised. Okay, so, and that shows me that it's yours. So then I can go to yours, and I'll go lower hand, and then I'll say, like-
So you just wouldn't be able to tell the order, though, if I raised my hand first, or let's say Bill raised his hand first?
Or, I don't think I'm gonna be able to tell you order, Frank.
Okay.
Is that correct? Yeah.
So you'll just pick who, okay.
I, I, I mean, it's-
Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor?
Yes, yes.
If you hover on the bottom of your screen there, you should have a button, or whatever it says participants. If you click that, it'll put a panel on the right side, and show who's all on the panel.
Yeah, I got that now.
And then you can see when they raise their hand as well.
Okay, thank you.
I see Frank has raised his hand as well.
Well, actually, Vice Mayor, can you lower your hand?
Yes.
And then-
There you go.
Raise your hand?
Yep.
So, I don't know, Mayor, if you see, but I saw that the city manager's hand was also raised, and Vice Mayor was above her. And when the Vice Mayor lowered her hand, Vice, uh, City Manager went up. So I think it puts them in order based on how they raised their hands. So I would just go by that for now.
I don't know, because the Vice Mayor is now going lower than other people that are raising their hands on my list.
Yeah, for me, she's at the bottom. I have City Manager, now, now, now it's Raquel underneath City Manager.
I just lowered my hand. Did you see that?
No, I didn't see it.
There's a little delay, like now it just, it lowered her hand, but it was a, a delay of probably about 15 seconds.
Yeah.
Alright. Um... Yeah, so it's gonna be, I, I hate to do this, but I think, what I may have to do is I may just have to mute everybody, and then as I call on people, unmute them, because otherwise I think we're gonna have a problem with people speaking over each other and missing things.
You want to do a whole practice run?
Sure. I don't have an agenda in front of me, but-
Oh, sorry, I forgot to raise my hand.
This is gonna be fun. Okay, um... Alright, so... Let's just, see, let's just have a couple people raise their hands, and, and on the air, and I'll just call people one after the other to see where it goes. Vice Mayor?
Okay, so, um, and perhaps this is more a question for, for Frank. So, you know, when I came in, Monica had this all set up for me. I, I couldn't for the life of me, if I had, like, I don't know how to get this party started. So, for the sake of ease, are we each gonna go um, to the same room each time, so we could have it set up? Or maybe this is a question for you, Mayor. Do you want, do we all want to have an assigned place where we're agreeing to be going to? So every week we're not fighting over, I'm in the conference room, you're in the closet, you know, whatever, wherever everyone thinks they're going?
I think that was, and, and that was kind of, I, I mentioned that to somebody um, yesterday, or whenever, and I said it's better if we're doing, like, if we're doing this as a dress rehearsal. Where you pick is where you pick, so we're not gonna be confused. Um, you know, and have issues with, you know, who wants to sit there and all that.
Because I don't want Monica to have to guess every two weeks where to, where to set up the computer for me, and everyone else. It, it seems like a tremendous waste of time. So, for Commissioner Harris, if you want to weigh in, are you okay where you are?
I'm perfect.
You're perfect.
Yeah.
So you're happy to be there for the next meeting?
I'm in this dark room by myself.
Perfect. You're probably in heaven.
We're just on last.
And Mayor, are you okay where you are?
Perfectly fine where I am.
Okay, and I'm good where I am. So, and, and I know we have, uh, one, one commissioner with, you know, just health concerns that wanted to be uh, where she wanted to be, I think that's fine. And can we just assign a place for the, for the other commissioner? Or could she pick a place, and, and we'll ask her to state, to pick that place, you know?
My understanding was that, um, Commissioner Brandon Marty wanted our city attorney to be present with her when she- um, and I also understand that it is difficult to get more than one, um, more than one, um, uh, more than a couple people in a room, not just for the safety issues, but also for the technology issues. And Frank can comment on that if, if you want, if you want to. But, um, I mean, it would make sense that you have the two people with the highest risk, which are Commissioner Brandon Marty and our city attorney, and they sit far enough apart from each other to be in there, and then have a tech person available if they need it, because they are both the lowest tech people. Um, and then, we have the other commissioner sit in a different room, because that would-
So, would it be reasonable to ask the city manager to email Commissioner James, and have her pick her place, and let her know, and then, uh, the city manager could let Monica know, and that way that room is reserved, it's for her, um, and she, that way she'll be set up and good to go as well?
I couldn't hear the Vice Mayor anymore.
Mine too.
Yeah, it froze.
Okay, my, my question was, is it reasonable to ask, um, City Manager Garcia to email Commissioner James, and ask her what her preferred place is, and then have it just, just be that?
Um, Vice Mayor, the, our city clerk is handling everything having to do with the whole seating arrangements and stuff.
Okay, so then can our city clerk, um, please do that?
Yes.
And then that way she can pick her spot, whatever the spot is, whatever, maybe he can have a list of what rooms are available. Uh, Bill said he's good with his, I'm good with mine, the mayor's good with hers. Uh, whatever other rooms are good, let her know, let her pick, and then that will be her room. And the benefit of that is that, so just like I said, I need this set up here, I need it ready for me. Uh, there'll be no question about, you know, in two weeks, where, where to set this up.
We don't, we don't want to have that.
Okay. Just to confirm, uh, Mayor, you're in the finance conference room, correct?
Correct. And, uh, City Attorney Ansborough has just joined us. Let me allow him to talk, hold on. Go ahead, Tom, you're on.
Okay, can you hear me now?
I can hear you.
Okay, great. I, I've spoken to Commissioner James today. And then she's now-
I can't hear talk.
Let me, let me promote you to panelist, maybe we can see you, are you on video too?
Name's over.
Hold on. Okay, you should be a panelist now.
Okay, am I on here?
You should be.
He, he needs to, to start video on his computer.
Where is that?
On the bottom, left side.
Um, there we go.
You may need to be closer to the microphone.
Yeah.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay, I, I had a call to Commissioner James, she did call me back about half an hour ago. I explained that the request, that Commissioner Brandon Marty and myself be in the commission chambers for the April 28 meeting. She said, uh, she's not inclined to do that. I said, I'm asking it for our safety, as the two people in the city who have the highest risk for our age and our pre-existing conditions. She said, so do black people. I'm like, look, I'm asking it as a safety issue. She said, concluded with, if Commissioner Brandon Marty requests me to do that, I will do that in another room. She was pretty adamant, very difficult to reason with her. Her tone was less than cordial.
So, oh, okay.
Go ahead.
Um, so... Um, Mayor, do you feel comfortable?
Vice Mayor froze there.
Okay, well, I, I did freeze. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
I can hear you, broke up for a minute, I hear you now.
So, and, and maybe, um, I, I, I don't really know who this question is directed towards. Perhaps, um, the city attorney, um, so a, as a, as a member of the COVID task force and a nurse, uh, that response is completely unreasonable, um, and I, I, I can't really fathom it. Um, I won't comment on the, the other concerns that she had. Uh, so, whose, whose authority uh, would be able to provide the commissioner a list of what rooms she can be in? Um, and with, I, I mean, that, that's just, that's inappropriate for the, the three to be on that one dais. If one of the, and I don't, wouldn't care who it is, if someone wanted to come off the dais and go into the seats, that would be okay, but for three to be on the dais, it's going to be, uh, very close. So somebody needs to communicate that to her, um, that her request has been heard, uh, but is not appropriate, given this situation.
Can, can you hear me if I respond now?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay.
Go ahead.
It was, it was very clear to me, the only way she is agreeing, for what it's worth, to do that is if Commissioner Brandon Marty asks her to do it.
Tom?
That is, I'm not saying it's reasonable, or always, it was clearly what it is, and-
I didn't hear Tom.
We didn't hear you, you broke up.
She, her only response was that Commissioner Brandon Marty wants her to stay out of the big room, that's what she will do. So my suggestion is perhaps you don't open the big room, and it's not an issue, and people have to go to separate rooms. Turn the power off, do it, do what you need to do, so the room is not available. That's a mayor call, in the under the emergency powers act.
I mean, I, I would, instead of fighting about this, I just simply would just rather it does not, nobody be in that room at all.
Okay, so everyone goes to a separate room, and the chambers are closed. Is that okay with you, Mayor?
That is fine with me.
Okay, so then I think we need to move forward with that, and if it's the city clerk who is in charge of, of letting people know the seating, um, let Commissioner Brandon Marty know that we will be closing the chamber, let her know which room, which will be completely isolated, um, she can choose from, and, uh, then we'll let the Commissioner, Commissioner James know the same thing. I, I believe part of the issue was that Commissioner Brandon Marty wanted, um, city attorney nearby. So if there's a way that we could-
I, I have a thought on that, I have a thought on that. Perhaps we could have them in the conference room upstairs, because that's a large conference room, and they could be in the same room and be at a distance from each other.
Or the northwest conference room. The northwest conference room is actually even bigger, because the Vice Mayor is already in this conference room.
Look, I, I'm, I'm easy like Sunday morning. I'm happy to go to any other room to resolve this issue. I, I don't, you know. So I can go to the, the nor, if she would prefer, let her know she can go to any of them, and if she says she wants this room, that's fine, and I will go to one of the other rooms. This is a, you know, this is not a good, a good thing that we should have to be spending a tremendous amount of time on this. Um, so yeah, so let's just get, get the, get that email out to them, and find out where they would like to be, and I will go to wherever is left over.
Just for the, for the record, I just want to check with Frank on this also. Isn't there an issue when you have too many primary speakers in one room on devices? Because I know, and I've done this before, not with Ring, but with some other, um, apps, uh, when you have more than, say, if you have, like, I've had like a phone on, and a, and a computer on, and there's echoing, and you can't hear what's being said. And I'm also, in addition to the safety issues.
Yeah, and, and even being in the, in the commission chamber together could present a technological issue, with uh, reverb and feedback coming through the two different systems. Unless people were headsets that were completely, you know, soundproof, that wouldn't allow that sound out, and that the audio, the, the other issue is that if the person is 10 feet away from you, and they speak into their microphone, and your microphone picks it up, there's gonna be a doubling effect of the people talking, and it's gonna get very confusing and difficult.
Right. Okay, I mean, it looks like, for me, I, I keep getting a note that comes up on mine, saying your internet connection is unstable, and I don't even know what that's about.
I got that too.
Me too.
I have not.
I got that also earlier.
I got that too.
Yeah. And I have, um, uh, Executive Director Williams is raising her hand.
Hi, I, I just have a question based on Frank's comments. Um, is it that our, our phone should be off, in the off position? Would that create a, a concern? And I just wanted to let you know that I will likely be in my office for the CRA board meeting.
Can you- Can you repeat your question about the phone?
Well, I guess, can you clarify what you were saying about the phone, about a phone being on and the...
The reverb? I was talking about actually where, if somebody was wearing like a headset with a microphone, so they would be able to, so that, you know, there wouldn't be the, their computer wouldn't be playing the sound out loud, and that, because if that's, if it is, then the person that's sitting 10, 15 feet away, their computer is going to pick up on the microphone the sound from the other computer, and it's going to bounce back and forth. If they're wearing headsets, that would eliminate that, but even the problem with the headset is that if the headset itself picks, the microphone picks up the other person talking that's 10, 15 feet away, it's still going to create the same issue, it's going to be very difficult to run the meeting with two people in the room together. If we had done it today, just to test it out in the chamber, we would have seen how that would have worked out, but I don't recommend we do that, and it sounds like they developed a plan already that's going to eliminate that issue.
I have a technical question, this is Eve, on the, I've been typing in the webinar chat, is that visceral to everybody? Can everybody see it, including the general public?
Yes.
Okay, it's good to know, and it's good that we have the record, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I saw the doggy comment.
Also, the chat, there's an easy setting if the preference is to not allow for chat, whoever's the host of the meeting can just click disable chatting between attendees, and then that goes away, which might be the way to go, because, you know, for these reasons.
And we don't, yeah, we don't want to have sunshine violations and issues happening.
And if we're going to be televising this on TV, would the chat show up or not? If it doesn't, then we should disconnect it.
I don't think it would, because I think it just says all panelists, so I think it only goes to the panelists, I don't think it goes to the attendees, but I could be wrong, Frank?
It's theoretically, since the TV, the feed that's coming through Channel 78 and YouTube right now is based on whatever Monica has on that laptop that's in the commission office, so if she has the chat window open, and, and the video system is feeding that window out, then yes, that would be captured, but I think by default, we're not going to see all that, we're just going to see the basic, whatever's being shared by the host.
Then I would recommend getting rid of the ability to use a chat.
Can I type up and say something, please?
Yes, I did not see your hand raised, but yes, city clerk.
Sorry, I just unmuted myself, how bold of me, I'm sorry.
Should have raised your hand.
I would think you wouldn't want panelists chatting amongst themselves, I think it might be some sort of sunshine law.
I believe it is a sunshine violation, so I believe that it should not, that should not, it would be, I think we'll disable that so people can't do it while we're during the meeting. But let me just ask something, Frank, is there a way, because this is a technical thing, and you are clearly much more advanced on this than I am, is there some way that you could end up being like a co-host or something, so that you could assist if I need help?
Yes, there, I tweaked this, I've already emailed our representative, because I was under the impression that we already had that option, so I'm waiting to hear back, but I did tweak a setting in the admin console that allows for co-hosts in the same meeting, and I was going to see if we can test that, so I don't know if it'll work, because this meeting is already in progress, but it will hopefully work for any meeting that we start after this one. And, yeah, I think it would be good to have that, just in case you have a technical issue on your end, and that way you can, if Monica and I are considered co-hosts, we could, if you're like, look, I'm clicking and nothing's happened, we can just click and, and maybe, you know, we'll resolve whatever issue it is, but yeah, I think that's a great idea.
And I think that would make me feel more comfortable as well, just because, I keep saying that the internet connection is, keeps getting lost a little bit here and there, so, and I don't know, I don't know, I don't know if that's a city thing, or here, your internet connection is unstable, just popped up again.
Stable, I have that too.
Yeah, so I think it might be City Hall. But I don't know.
We'll look into that.
Yes. Panelists, I have a city manager raising her hand, yes, Anna?
Yes, I was wondering, this, this question is to the city attorney and the deputy city attorney, have we found a way to deal with quasi judicial? I'm already thinking about the May meeting, and, and dealing with, with the trion and others that are coming forward, so we're all with the quasi judicial challenge.
We have established procedures, we're being vetted, we're looked over to see other cities doing this successfully, so that we can model after them. My concern remains that I want to have public access live written down, and if we can't, then I have to default back to pre-submitted comments, which I would do, I think the county does that, you know, I'm, we're not the county. I, the idea of quasi judicial, it's an active exchange among the people to talk, so if a person wants to ask, you know, the applicant a question, that's, should be an ability to do that. We're still working through that, but we have a procedures that have been grown up, they've been sent out for it to be vetted, and I'm waiting back on comments. Even I have done, about a week ago, been sent out.
Tom, you keep working it up too.
I didn't hear Tom, the louder part.
I heard you're working on a procedure, that's the gist of it.
Yeah, we have drafted one, it has been submitted and circulated, waiting for comments back.
Okay.
So, so the cities that, that were able to do their quasi judicial with pre-submitted, and, and pre-submitted questions to the city clerk, if any, because some cities had some, some cities had one, some cities didn't have any, is that something that we could possibly do, Tom?
I'm reluctant to do that, if I can find a way to accommodate live people speaking, that's what they want to do. If I can't do that, if Frank tells me we just cannot do that, then we will retreat to the pre-comment.
I agree with Tom, Anna, if we can find a way for the live inquiry, it's important, because in quasi judicial, you have to give the opportunity for cross-examination.
Got it.
That's the reason. So, if, if we can provide the live with the hand up and let a participant speak for that moment to ask its question, whether it's of staff or of the applicant, and cross-examine them on anything they just said, that's important for quasi judicial.
Okay. Thank you.
So then I think this might be a good time to go through the attendees and see if they're able to raise their hands or what have you, and call on them to make sure. Okay, let me call on each person, okay, I see a hand raised. From Fernando. Go ahead, Fernando. You're muted. You should be unmuted.
Good afternoon, everyone, it's Fernando, good afternoon, sorry.
Okay, so we're able to hear you, that's good, did you have anything else you wanted to add, or that was it?
No, no, that, no, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I have Corinne with her hand raised, yes, unmuted. There, it should be. Where's that co-host feature?
Yeah.
Okay, wait, there you go, can you hear us or no? No, okay, we're shooting, if you can't speak, all right.
The one thing I would suggest also is when someone is an attendee and they're done speaking, if we do happen to call on someone, disable their ability to talk once, you know, not just use them, but also just remove that feature from them.
Yeah, that's, I'm doing that for each one as I, as I call on people. Eleanor, we already heard from, so I'll skip down, Adam, can you hear us? Hold on, not letting you hear me.
He's still muted.
Yeah. Still muted, I hope he unmuted.
Are you trying to unmute her, Mayor?
I'm trying to unmute Adam.
Does the right-click feature do anything for you?
Yeah.
Hold on.
Adam, Corinne, Eleanor.
Yeah, it's just, it's, I'm clicking on him, I'm clicking, I tried both left and right-click, and it says unmute, oh, there we go, wait, no, that's Eleanor, hold on.
I'm here, I can hear you.
Yes. Okay. I can't get Adam to be unmuted.
Did you click unmute?
I did.
It's still not doing it, okay.
For what times I have clicked on it, not doing anything. All right, let me skip down to somebody else, I'll come back. Kathleen.
Hi, yes, Kathleen, can you hear me?
Yes, good.
Perfect.
Thank you. Linda.
Hi, this is Linda, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. How's that been?
Wonderful. I see somebody raising their hand. Who is our guest there? I see a guest, who is our guest? It won't let me unmute here.
I don't see guest, Mayor.
I do on my...
Oh, for attendees, sorry, yes, I do see guest.
But it won't let me mute. I'm wondering if the person on their end has to unmute themselves?
Yeah.
And Adam, that may be the same for you.
I'm messaging Adam, and I think he might have stepped away, because he's not responding to my messages either.
That's fine. Corinne, I have you unmuted, and I thought I heard a noise, are you there? No? Keep hoping.
Is Corinne there, but she can't get through?
She, there seems to be an issue with maybe with her microphone or something, because we can't hear her, she can hear us, but we can't hear her. But everybody else seems to be working for the department, we'll check with Adam whenever he's available. Okay, and I can see the people that did raise hands, I know not everybody did. Vice Mayor.
My question, so...
Your hand is raised?
Yes, yes, so, does anyone, does Frank also have the ability to do what you're doing? I'm thinking about this in the case, in the unlikely case that you somehow got disconnected or frozen, would we then lose the ability to, to mute and unmute and do all of that? Does Frank also have the abilities, or some secondary person?
Yeah, that's interesting, if he's the second, if he's the co-host, then he can deal with things on his end as well.
Oh, okay, okay, so Frank is the co-host?
I, don't you think it would be good to have a technical person as a co-host?
Yeah, we, we need a second person to have the ability to control this meeting other than you, in the unlikely case that you get disconnected or frozen, so the whole meeting doesn't stop, and you have the chance to reconnect or reboot, or whatever you would maybe have to do.
Right, I would, that's, that was the thought, yeah.
Does that sound reasonable?
That's very reasonable.
Okay, so Frank, can you, you know, either designate yourself or someone else as that person?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions from anybody about this process?
From me, from me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, the continuing of the quasi judicial is that the staff puts on slides, it shows the property, it shows the text, we have a text change, and we have Mr. Motwani's site plan modification, so I would want to have a test with the community development staff, and Eve and I, I guess, Frank, to run a dry run.
I can hear him, Tom.
It's going to be important to make sure that goes smooth. Quasi judicial, ending on hearing.
He, Tom, I'm sorry, you broke up again, were you saying that we need to make sure that we can have him appear on video, is that what you're saying?
I want to be able to have the ability to, when the applicant, when Corinne puts on her slides typically, we all see them, the public sees them, she makes her presentation, and then the applicant speaks up and sometimes adds things, and I want to be able to have a dry run, so we feel comfortable that runs smoothly.
Okay.
Was I audible?
Yes.
Yes.
Much closer to the laptop.
So, can I, can I respond to Tom?
Yes, please.
Yeah, so the, the quasi judicial is not going to be any different from what we just did by calling on the attendees and allowing them to speak. Anyone who is just attending the meeting from the public is going to be an attendee. If they raise their hand, and Mayor calls on them and says, yes, would you like to challenge the applicant, or whatever the language is, then they can say, yeah, and they can, you know, state their name, address, or whatever they have to do, and they can, you know, speak their piece, and if there's a problem, they can be muted or cut off.
Okay.
Whatever's being presented can stay on the screen at the time, Corinne can pull, you know, stop sharing the presentation to allow the video to go back, I mean, it's, it's all going to behave the same way it's working right now, it's just a matter of, how many people that there is.
So, let me ask you, Frank, the quasi judicial is my biggest concern, because it's really the only thing that needs to have a presentation. Should we invite the, the actual applicant to City Hall, maybe have him set up in a room with Corinne, clearly separate, to be able to make sure that this goes smoothly?
Frank?
I, I don't know if that's a good idea, I think that if we, it's, that presents a different difficulty, if we're trying to keep people from coming to City Hall, and then having somebody come in to sit in a room with Corinne, that's an issue, and they may require Monica to come in and help with technical issues, and now we're, we're piling up a lot of people, they may bring four people with them, and it can become an issue. So, I don't know, I don't know if that's the right answer, I know that...
Frank, this is Eve, if I could interrupt for a minute, I saw a few quasi judicial proceedings that have gone virtual, and they were from home, and it did work, they may have been a problem for a moment, that the, the video screen did not click over to the video of the presentation from staff, but basically, if that happens, you know, you put the leaders of the meeting on notice, and then they tweak that process, but as long as our planning staff has all of the discs, all of the material that is going to be shown on the computer, I don't think you need the actual applicant in City Hall.
Yeah.
Well, again, if I may, I only want to have the ability to test the process, doesn't need everybody to be involved in it, it'd be planning, Eve and I, and we would do dry runs of a couple, of the quasi judicial to see that things go up on the screen, I'm looking at the picture of the giant seal right here, that's it, of course, that's what's, because we're not using documents, but the other ones are going to have the actual photographs of the property aerials, and then, you know, whatever Corinne put down, I want to be able to see that, so you see it, the public sees it.
Plan. So, there, there's, I think that we can work with the, with the applicants, we can work with Corinne, we can do some testing, I have no problem working with the people directly, and, you know, getting them on the software, everybody's been using Zoom, this is basically Zoom, it's the same platform, so it's, it's pretty straightforward like the rest of them, and we can work with them ahead of time, and we can have their presentations as backup, so we can have copies of them, and I mean, I think we can facilitate that process pretty well, as long as everybody is aware and has been trained on how to use the software.
That's not until the second weekend in, in, in May, so you have plenty of time to test that with the applicant.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, and I see, whoa, hello, I had a request from, I saw a hand up from Commissioner Harris, but now I see it's gone, but did you want to say something, Commissioner Harris?
I can hear you.
What's that?
I can hear you all out in clear, I see you all.
Okay, good.
Why did the screen just switch? Like, why is the orientation different?
The, I stopped sharing my screen, so now, this is the default view, which is either, it's either the, it spotlights the person who's speaking, or you can just put on a gallery mode where you just see everybody's head on the screen, all the same size.
I like that, gallery mode.
Gallery, I like the gallery, there's Adam.
Oh, there you are. Oh, there you are, okay.
How do we go back to gallery, how do we default to gallery?
On the top right-hand corner, there's a, it looks like a bunch of different little squares, click on that.
Yeah, so, so you can all see what you see, you can see it as either gallery or highlighting the speaker. But since the mayor's, since the mayor's the host right now, it's whatever she's doing with her screen is what's being fed out to the public feed.
Mayor, what are you going to feed out to the public?
That's a good question, um I, I kind of like the gallery.
I like the gallery better because.
You can see that everybody's present.
Yes.
See, you can see who's who in the zoo, like, and where everyone is and, yeah, I think that's better.
The only issue with gallery mode is if you click on it, you can see it has even people who are just attendees listed.
That's okay.
And they're a little tiled, and if there's a lot of attendees, this can be a very large.
Oh, I see where the problem could be.
So I have this big thing in front of the mayor's face, do I press yes or no to get it out? It says this will stop others' screen sharing, do you want to continue, do I press yes or no on this?
I would say no.
Okay, there you go. I see Frank in big.
Okay, that's the speaker view, so.
Now I see the mayor in big.
Oh, well, I see you.
Big or normal?
Um but I'll put it, I like the ga, I don't know, I like the gallery better anyway, because in this way we can see everybody.
Oh, can you see, Raquel is, is holding her hand up, can you see?
I see it now.
No.
I got a question, so as the public joins and becomes um part of the attendee list, will our videos become smaller and smaller to the point where we can hardly see each other?
I, I would like to ask the mayor to try something, can you go to the attendee list and all the people that say talking permitted, can you click on them and uh disable them from talking, get what the button is?
Yeah, hit disable.
And I think they'll drop off of that list once you do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so now if you're in, in the gallery mode, you're only going to see people who are panelists listed when you, you know, as tiles in that gallery mode.
That works. So then, right, so then, well, well, we won't have both the city manager and, and Raquel on here at the same time. Um but we will have two other, we won't have Eve and Tom on here at the same time. So, and he won't be up here if you're the host, so, or co-host, so you might be up here, would you be?
Yeah, I, I would probably be on there, but I would just take off my video.
Okay, and then we'll have two other commissioners on here.
Yep.
Okay, so that won't be too bad, that's not too bad for the gallery.
And then, then if you bring someone as a, another person in as a panelist to give a presentation, then they're going to come in, you're going to see their video or their name, they have video disabled.
For example, uh our city clerk has his hand raised, so go ahead, city clerk.
Hi Mayor, um normally on the dais, I'm not viewed or shown by the camera. And so I would be fine with you removing me as a panelist after the roll.
Well, I think so, but you have to be on, like to speak on certain things, like if we need to call, call a roll and that sort of thing.
Yes, yeah, I would go, I would, I would go with that, but um normally even uh in the chamber, I'm not in view, you just hear me.
Well, but you can do it like what you're doing right now, where it just has your name up there, like who's on the dais, basically.
Alright, so you can't see me?
We can't.
No.
Well, I don't know how, I don't know what I did, I thought you were seeing me.
No, this is the city clerk.
It just says city clerk, uh.
But that's fine with me, I don't want to be seen.
Why not?
That's perfect.
On the lower left, that, that start video.
You got a facial?
Alright.
I tried that, it says you cannot start your video because the host has stopped it.
Okay.
I can stop it, but.
Now I'm curious to see Tom.
Yeah, I want to see Tom too.
I want to see Tom.
Tom!
Bring him on, bring him on.
Okay, so it just, it just said the host has asked you to start.
There you are!
Little party, we're having a little virtual party.
Now, now take me off.
You look great, Tom.
Thank you.
That shirt looks pretty.
Thank you.
Okay.
I dressed up.
Okay. Um alright, so that works. But what, any other questions that we have right now, I, I think we're going to probably have questions as we proceed next Tuesday. Um and that's fine, I mean, it's not going to be perfect and we know that, and as long as I think we're ready for that, we can, you know, try to address it as much as we can, but at least if I have Frank there as a technical host, that, I think that'll help. Uh city clerk?
Uh I just want to confirm, uh Mayor, you're in the finance conference room.
Correct.
Correct, Commissioner Harris, you're in community development.
That's true.
Okay, Vice Mayor Adman, you'll take whatever room no one else takes.
I, I would prefer to take the upstairs conference room, but if, if it's a deal breaker for someone else, yes, I'll give it back.
Alright, thank you, just needed clarification, thank you.
If I may, what, what did, what did we resolve about Commissioners Brandon, Marty, James and me?
Can't hear you.
I don't think Chicky, Chicky wanted me to be there, but I don't think, I'm not sure, she said she needed me to be sitting where she's visible to. So I'm trying to work this out, where we, we all have a place. And what do we do, what do we decide with the big room, where?
Well, there's a couple of big rooms, I mean, we have the northwest conference room and we have the conference room upstairs. So, you know, if, if, you know, my understanding from you previously was that she wanted you to be in the same room with her.
I don't know if that's true, I do know I have one commissioner that's insisting on sitting in her chair, for what that's.
Well, no, that room is closed now, so you don't get to sit in those chairs, they don't get to sit in those chairs, it's closed, everyone.
That's what I wanted to clarify, so that needs to be, that notice needs to go out from the clerk or whoever. And then, Frank, are you saying if I'm in the same room with Chicky, it would be problematic?
Yes.
Okay, so maybe this, I don't know, what do you suggest, if she does want me in the same room and it can't be done, it can't be done.
It can't, it can't be done.
Okay, that's the answer, so then we need a room for her and for me, and we'll, I'll go wherever, wherever you send me.
You can probably go up to your office.
If I can use my office, that's fine.
Yeah, go to your office, perfect.
Okay, and then you want to have a place that's comfortable for the other two, whatever those are, I'm leaving.
Everyone gets a comfortable room.
Absolutely.
Everybody gets a nice chair, everybody gets a, a pitcher of water. Aim for everybody.
And snacks.
Everyone gets some crackers, so their blood sugar stays stable, all of you get the same thing.
I like it.
And, and you know, and, and not for nothing, let me just throw this out there, I actually think it's a good idea to not really have anybody in that chamber because when the time does come back, come back and we can actually come there physically, that's like a clean room. And it would be good to know that it's a clean room, that nobody's been there and we don't have to worry, I mean, it's already been disinfected and whatnot each, every day and they, you know, are doing their cleaning and I think it, it's probably best if we know that it's, that way we'll come in eventually. It's just a thought on my part.
Agree, agreeing.
Come, before we break up, again Frank, the idea of perhaps doing a dry run with Corinne on the upcoming zoning matters is two, one for alcohol hours, one for a text change for Griffin Living. They don't necessarily need visual, but they do get, you typically do get visual because we show the text of both of the amendments. So I might want to try to do a dry run of that, if you think that's warranted with Corinne.
I think that'd be a good idea.
Okay, we will work on that with you, Corinne, Eve and I, and we'll, I'll make sure that goes smoothly, so the public can see it. We see it, and obviously the commissions can see it.
Okay.
Okay, folks.
Meeting adjourned, so do you adjourn the meeting, is that what happens now? Do you have a gavel over there, Mayor?
I don't, but I'll just, I'll hit my phone or something, alright, so if there's no other questions, everybody? What?
Take off your shoe.
No, because, no Corona.
Too crucial, that's very crucial.
I'm very, I'm very conscious of this, I've been, I, you know, I'm literally, it's very hard not to leave my house at all, if I can help it, so. Um in any event, so if nobody has any other questions, I don't see anybody else, oh, I just wanted to check with um Adam, because we, we weren't able to get him before, is he still on the line? Adam, can, can you?
He's frozen.
Yes, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Adam!
Hi.
Hi, happy birthday!
Okay.
Oh yeah, thank you manager.
Okay, good, alright, so let me disable talking again. And, alright, so if we have nothing else, we'll see everybody back here on the 28th, probably a little early, so that we can all make sure that we're ready to go. And I think the CRV meeting is at six o'clock now, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so we'll see everybody back here maybe a little before six, so we can make sure that we're ready to go. Okay, okay, where is her?
You safe?
Thank you, bye everybody.
Bye!
Alright Mayor, you're going to hang out with me for a minute?
I will, we'll try that co-host thing.
Okay, Raquel, are you still there?
Um how do I get off, do I just X out?
You can, you can click, yeah, you can click leave meeting on the bottom right of the, of the panel, but also, I'll go with you also to talk about how you, you want to conduct the, the meeting on the 22th, well, just.
Oh, okay, you'll call or email me?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, thank you.
So just leave meeting, right, on the bottom right-hand?
Yep.
Oh, there's Marjorie, Marjorie came in, but.
Leave meeting.
Well, let's call on Marjorie, because she, I, I don't think she's been able to get in on one of these meetings, oh, she's gone.
She's gone now, never mind.
She's been having the hardest time getting in these meetings, we've been trying with her and I finally saw her there about halfway through, I was like, oh, she made it.
I didn't see her until just now, so.
Alright, so I'm going to click on claim host, so I'm the host again. And now, let me see what I can do here, so I can make you the host, but that's not, let me, I'm going to bump you back to attendee. I'm going to back up to a host and see if it, because I enabled the feature in the console, let me try it.
Hello?
Yeah, you there?
I'm here.
Okay, it still just says make host, let me see if I click that, do you want to change the host to Mayor? Okay, but you're the host now, so it's the same deal. Um I want to try one more thing, if you have another like two or three minutes.
Sure.
I'm going to end the webinar and I'm going to restart it and um, and then um just rejoin again the same way you came in. Did you use the link from the website or something?
I'm not sure, Monica set me up. Oh, Marjorie's raising her hand. Wait a minute. Marjorie? Muted. Marjorie? Not letting me up.
There.
I muted myself, so that's about right.
Yay!
Well, I, I heard you say, let's call on Marjorie right when I pushed the leave meeting, so I didn't, I just wanted to make sure.
Not about, no, I was just checking to make sure everybody was able to hear us and able to.
No, actually I thought it, I thought everybody looked great.
Good, good, okay, cool, alright, so we're done, Frank and I are just playing with this co-host thing, we're going to.
Okay, yeah, I was just, I was, you know, trying to, but Frank, you'll call.